Thursday, February 13th, 2002. Commissioners, please introduce yourselves, starting down there with Don.
Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman.
Hi, I'm Mel Roop.
Ted Gambogi.
I'm Ken Mabron.
Good morning, George Lee.
Terry Marshall.
And I'm George Sheets. We have our council liaison here, Steve Shiska. We also have Councilman Phil Good and Kathy Rusking, so thank you for getting involved in this. This is an interesting project. It was kind of like reading Valentine letters to that one. These guys, it's just kind of a love fest. But of course, we'll probably have other points of view too. Anyway, it was nice to see this. The first item on the agenda is the January 30th, 2020 minutes. Kaylee Nunes took them for us. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
I move.
Any discussion, changes? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any pros, okay, they pass. Okay, first item is a rezone over there on Sunset Avenue. I believe Tammy Witt's going to present that to us.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission, Tammy Duett, community planner. The subject property is on multifamily medium density, located right here. It is an area with other multifamily medium density. We have some business general here along Fair Street. Then here we have the fairgrounds, which is multifamily high density. In the 2015 general land use plan, this area is designated as for a commercial area, which would allow for typical community and regional commercial uses. Here's some imagery of the area of the property. Here's the subject property here. We have Fair Street right here. We have the Frye Shopping Center. We have the county annex building. And we also have the fairgrounds right here. And we have other multifamily uses in the area. This is an existing building. It was previously used as an adult daycare center. The current request is to rezone from multifamily medium density to business regional to allow the property to be used as a veterinary clinic. There are no proposed changes to the footprint. It's all existing. We have the parking over here. So in parking right here, which has adequate parking for the proposed use. The only proposed change will be interior remodel for the vet clinic. Here's a view of the subject property from the street. I guess it's already existing. It already has the required landscaping. And here's the side of the building with the access. Here's the one parking area. Then here's the back of the building with the main access right here. Then here's the adjacent parcel, which is the extra parking area. This is a parcel across the street. It is a single-family residence. This is looking to the northeast down the street, where we have other single-family and multifamily residences. To the south, we have Miller Creek. This is a floodplain area. So the parking lot's allowed, but any other structures may require additional. But there's no plans for any other structures in this area. To the west, we have the Gell Gardner Patio Homes. It is buffered by an open space tract. And then we have the adjacent parcels to the north, which we have single-family and multifamily uses. Like I said, there's no changes to the exterior proposed. It's all going to be interior remodel. They have adequate parking. This is just a rezoning request to change it to business regional to allow for the vet clinic. The applicant did obtain letters of support from patrons and also from the existing, one of the existing neighbors for their existing business, sorry. They've outgrown their current facility. They've been looking for a new place to expand their business, and this property seems to fit their needs. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I want to commend the staff and Harmony Holistic Veterinary Care for the photos and the letter of testimony. I have one question, and that's on the letter. In the fourth paragraph, it says, "Our office hours are Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 6:00. We recently expanded our office hours due to the daytime closing of local emergency clinic in an effort to provide our clients with the veterinary options at all hours, day and night." So what would be the hours that this clinic would be open, and what days?
I would have to defer to the applicant, but per their letter of intent, it is Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 6:00. But I'll defer that to the applicant when they come up.
Come to the podium.
Come on up and please state your name and address, which I believe we know.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, please state your name.
My name is Alistair McDonald, and our current address is on 12th Place, Unit 6, just near the hospital and Prescott Women's Center.
Is this regarding the hours question?
Yes. So I'm one of the three owners of the practice. It may have been some confusion in our language. Our office hours are 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. They were previously 8:00 to 4:00, but with the demands of the emergency practice having closed during the day, there was this dead zone between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. where our patients didn't have anywhere to go. And so we extended it to 6:00 p.m. But that remains our intention. We have no other plans.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got another question.
Yes, Mel.
Oh, my question's for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Morning. Morning.
Thanks. Just a clarification first. In the staff report, it says .94 acres is the size of the parcel. Is that just the parcel that's outlined in red on the exhibits, or is it both parcels?
Both.
Both. I thought so. Okay, good. There's two issues here, really. There's the use issue, which is the vet clinic, and there's the zoning issue, which is what we're to act upon, the zoning. The use itself, I think that's fine. I think it's had good justification in the letters and staff and so forth. And I don't have any problem with the vet clinic at that location.
Mel, could you speak in?
The zoning issue, when I... Oh, there's the zoning. Here's the parcel here. It's not high enough for some.
I don't know if you can turn the volume up on that.
I'm not sure how to adjust that. That's usually through the IT department, but...
I can... I'll talk...
Just talk loud.
Okay. Tell me if I'm too loud. Hello? I can't hear you. The zoning in the area, as she noted, it's a residential area primarily. There's some business general in this location, which is the same as the area, the large area here along Norvalley Road. And then there's a small area of neighborhood business in this location within the same general area. I was curious what, why a regional commercial was suggested, since either of these categories allow a veterinary clinic. In the, I think it's page 17 in the Land Development Code, it has a table, and it lists all the different zoning districts after a veterinary clinic. And any one of those three would allow a vet clinic. The regional commercial, I read the Land Development Code. The regional commercial says, "High-density business district attracts customers from regional area, typically along high-volume arterial highways, typically large-scale buildings. 50-foot building height, 100 feet with SUP." The other two categories in that area, business general, described, and I'm quoting out of the Land Development Code, "Moderate-intensity business district attracts customers from citywide area, typically on Collector or arterial street. Maximum lot coverage, none." There's no maximum lot coverage. And maximum building height, 50 feet. The neighborhood-oriented business, which is also already in that area, it allows a veterinary clinic. And the Land Development Code says, "Low-to-moderate intensity business district." Most importantly, because of its location, the code says, "Building size is limited in order to mitigate the impacts on nearby residents. Uses are intended to complement residential areas with compatible site and building design elements, including low-scale building mass, landscape buffers, subdued exterior lighting, and signage. Uses shall not create excessive traffic, noise, light, or other activities that would have negative impacts on adjacent residential areas." I believe the vet clinic is compatible with all those requirements. Maximum lot coverage is 50 percent, maximum building height 35 feet, and maximum building size, 12,000 square feet per structure. The existing building is 7,300 square feet, so the neighborhood category would allow additional building on the property of a moderate amount. Because...
Can we hold on a second before you move on? So in that table, it's not allowed by right under those, with the CUP, which is a different process. So if it was already zoned, one of those others, it would be allowed with a CUP. We're just rezoning it to where it's allowed by right in the first place. Otherwise, they'd have to get a rezoning and a CUP.
Right. And I believe the requirements of the neighborhood commercial are there to protect the residential area from future development that might not be as compatible as the veterinary clinic. Because if you just, if you don't consider what uses proposed now and approve a regional commercial, which is more appropriate for a mall, it opens up a lot of opportunities for development that maybe the neighborhood might not be real happy about. I'm wondering, what's the justification for the regional commercial in the middle of a residential area?
Because when we look at where it's allowed by right in the first, so business regional is where the use is allowed by right first. If it was already zoned, business general or neighborhood-oriented business, then we would have just done a CUP. But normally, you don't do both. You don't rezonate and process a CUP at the same time. That doesn't make any sense. We're going to look at where is it allowed by right in the first place, and it's a business regional. And you can approve it per the site plan. And then that way, if anyone in the future comes and wants to expand the use, then they have to come back through the public hearing process. That is an option for you, to approve it per the site plan, but we can't approve it per that use.
Yeah. No, I understand. It seemed that the only reason for it is as you described, so that there's no need to have a CUP. I think a conditional use permit and following the design elements in the neighborhood commercial is a better commercial for that area. And if they don't need any commercial, if they could just come in with a conditional use permit to get the vet clinic approved, I think that would be great.
We would have two applications in front of you. We would have the rezoning and a CUP, and normally, we would not do that.
Why?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just some additional depth to the conversation. We also look when we're discussing, negotiating with an applicant as to what zoning district they ultimately are asking for in a rezoning situation. We often look back at neighborhood plans and the general plans, intention for the area. Both indicate this area to become commercial. It's got inroads of commercial. It's surrounded by commercial. It has more commercial potential than continued single-family residential potential.
Now, in the general plan, I looked in the general plan, and I didn't see a breakdown. It just says, "Commercial." It doesn't say three or four different levels of commercial.
It does not. That's correct.
There is the flexibility in the zoning when you get into an area to tailor it to that area.
That is correct. It could be any level of commercial within our zoning districts.
Doesn't say regional commercial.
No, it does say that for "commercial," which allows for typical community and regional commercial uses. That's what it says in the general plan.
Yeah. But I... So are you saying then, George, that the intention overall, the long-range planning for this area, is to have it all ultimately regional commercial? Because right now, there isn't any regional commercial zoning there.
There is north of it, but the intention by the general plans language is for it to develop in a commercial manner. The level of intensity is something that's controlled by zoning, and it could be a mix of uses, as you see. Within the area, RO districts, BG districts, there's a variety of different districts scattered throughout the area. So it could be any one of those districts. It's the intention that ultimately, this will develop in a commercial pattern that was put into the general plan.
Okay, let me just close then. I think a regional commercial, based on what we know regional commercial means, is not appropriate for a residential area. I think we can accommodate the veterinary clinic, which I think is a good use, with a much lesser zoning district and protect the residential area better. Or just get a conditional use permit.
You know, that's where the train used to run. That's been a mixed area since 1910. You could drive through there 100 times, and you wouldn't guess what zoning it is, because it's a big mixture of everything, so, you know.
Well, I'm just going by the strict language of the land use.
Okay, Ken.
Thank you. And Mel, are you finished?
Yes.
I'm going to echo some of Mel's concerns over that particular zoning category. That's a real high business. We have shopping centers on major corners that are not zoned business regional. Most of them would be business general, which eliminates height issues and some other things. My general feeling is just the zoning designation you're requesting is pretty excessive. I'm also concerned... I think it's a good project. Let me back up here. I don't know. Where's Delia? She's not here? Oh, there you are. You changed your hair color. I know them because we put down a dog in August that Delian, holistic veterinarian, took care of. He had acupuncture, and he was smiling that night, so it must have worked, but it didn't work forever on the other things. So I'm really sensitive to it. I think the veterinarian, is the whole purpose, because the use is for veterinarian clinic that we're asking for the change at all?
Yes.
Do we allow CUPs in multifamily medium?
Not for this use. So in the land use table, it designates what type of uses can apply for a CUP, and this is not one of them.
Could you tell everybody here, including maybe some of the commissioners, what is the first zoning that you're allowed a CUP for veterinarian clinic?
Looks like it'd be neighborhood-oriented business, which is right here.
Yeah, that's right.
Neighborhood-oriented business, NOB.
And that allows?
A CUP.
For veterinarian.
With a CUP, with a CUP.
I understand.
Yes.
I actually have a question for Matt Pedrakia. He just hates that, I know. Matt, would this, going to any of the business zonings, either of the two, would that be kind of like spot zoning? We have nothing adjacent, certainly nothing touching this parcel?
If we look at the zoning map of the area, we do have multifamily medium. We do have business general here. We do have some business regional here and here. So we do have other business uses in the area.
Business regional?
We have some right here, and we have some right here and here. So, I mean, in this corridor here, we have not had any requests. We've had the pre-use of it as an adult care facility would have been a commercial use of the property, but was allowed under an old code prior to the existing Land Development Code. So now, we're trying to bring it up to what the current use could be of the property.
To answer your question, from my point of view, as a city planner previously, we called it spot zoning, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Legally, it's probably not considered spot zoning. The statute requires general compliance with the general plan. So general plan looks at this area as being consistent with commercials. Can I tell you why spot zoning is bad? Generally, you want some consistency in your zoning for future planning. And what you don't want to do is pick and choose properties as you go as to what the zoning category would be. But if you take a look at this particular area, you'll see all sorts of different zoning in the, you know, the general reason. And I think that's one of the reasons the statute takes a look at, what does the general plan say? And if the general plan presumes some commercial development here, then it's not technically an illegal spot zoning.
Thank you. That was...
In essence, you're zoning for the future.
It could be.
And what does the general plan show for this area?
Commercial, which allows typical community and regional commercial uses. So that's in compliance, this proposed request to business regional is in compliance with the regional plan, general plan.
Hey. That's just my initial thoughts. I'd like to hear the other commissioners have to say too.
Okay, yes, Don.
If we did the motion with the caveat of "per the site plan," how would that affect future potential owners of this building?
So basically, if anyone wanted to change the footprint or change the building itself, because it's just per the site plan, then they'd have to come back through this public hearing process to amend that site plan.
So if they wanted to go to the height or add on to the building, they're going to have to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, they have to come back through the whole process.
If the interior occupant of the building changes, they would not necessarily have to come back.
Correct.
Okay, let's go to the public here. I know we received quite a few letters, but whether you're for or against, or just have a comment.
And the applicant had something to say too, so.
Okay, the applicant has got something to say?
Sorry, the owner had something.
Hello.
I'm Yvonne Napolitano. I'm the Executive Director of Adult Care Services and the Margaret T. Morris Center, and the former director of our Susan J. Ream Adult Day Center program. For numerous reasons, and after having met with George, Adult Care Services supports the rezoning of our property for 826 Sunset Avenue for the holistic veterinarian care. We feel that our neighborhood, and I've been with our company for 21 years now, has been in transition with numerous businesses, including those at the end of Fair Street and Sunset Avenue. And now, we have at the end of Whipple, US Pets has moved in. So there's a lot of action all around our area. We believe this is a good project, and it's bittersweet that our day center isn't open anymore. And you think about caring for people with disabilities and seniors. We're caring for our family, pets, at this point. And the two work hand in hand together, so we see it as a care community just for our beloved pets. We know there could be concerns, maybe about barking dogs, but there's dogs all in our neighborhood. We see dogs walking up and down the street all day. There are dogs behind fences. We hear barking throughout the day. And we don't believe that it's going to be any different with the veterinarian clinic there. And also, our hours of operation at the day center were Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00. And at one point, we were serving close to 150 participants throughout our week. And so from a transportation perspective, we had our vans shuttling people in and out throughout the day. We had family members coming in and out throughout the day. And we see the same thing happening with the veterinarian clinic and families bringing their pets to the clinic. So on behalf of my board and I, we do support this project. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Hopefully, we have some additional individuals that would like to speak.
As an owner of the clinic, and as a homeowner and a business owner and a father and so forth, I intimately understand any concerns that neighbors might have. I wouldn't want a kennel to move in next door, a noise, smells, pollutants, anything of this kind. You know, everybody in this room is uniquely aware of reputation. Takes years to earn and minutes to lose. I'm very proud of the reputation that we have, and we've built it by fulfilling one commitment at a time. Our commitment to our neighbors in the future is the same as our commitment to our neighbors currently, some of whom have attested to our authenticity of operation and so forth. So if I were a neighbor, I would be concerned about light, noise, emissions, anything like that. This is not the type of practice that we run. One of the most glaringly consistent things about a vet clinic is the absence of Lamborghinis parked behind them. This is not... We are in the nurturing business, and it would be a complete dichotomy for us to be in the nurturing business surrounded by neighbors who hated us. This is not the business that we're in. We're proud of the work we do. I'm very proud of our team, our mission, our message. And I would be just as proud to represent that in this neighborhood. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Do you own this building and parcel?
No, we are intending to. We don't own it yet. And to be honest, this is our, this would be our forever home. You know, there is nothing more that we would want to do. This space would satisfy any needs that we might have. And taking the legacy of its current owners would be one that we'd be proud to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Wilson, that row would like to throw in a comment, or you just nod your head, like you agree with what's been said so far?
I got one, I got actually two more questions.
Wait, we have another.
Oh, good.
Hello. I'm one of the veterinarians and one of the owners at Harmony, and I'm proud to also be a Prescottonian.
Will you get your name?
Oh, Dr. Tammy Paletto. Anyway, so having grown up in this area and being a veterinarian in this area and knowing what Harmony is and why I bought into the practice, there's definitely a sense of community that I feel we would uphold in that area. Because I'm proud of Prescott and Prescott's heritage, I don't think our intent in any way is to come in and build a mall or build anything other than a clinic that the neighborhoods and the community would be proud of. So I just want to mention that as we proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We have one person coming forward, and then Steve can say something.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Elizabeth Harris. I've been a board member since the inception of the Susan J. Ream Center, Daycare Center. If we can't be there, I want this group to be there. I admire them. I respect them. I think it would be wonderful for the area and certainly for my heart. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Councilman Steve Shiska. Yeah. Yeah, do you want to step up? Well, you need to step up.
You still got to go to the podium.
Rank does not have privilege here. We can get the spotlight out.
We still need your name and your address.
Prescott City Councilman Liaison to this committee. What I'm getting from this is that nobody objects to the business, to what it's bringing to the neighborhood, which is fabulous, and what it's bringing to Prescott. What I do detect is that there are certain commissioners here who think that it's letting the camel's nose into the tent for a greater possible intrusion into what is now mostly residential neighborhood. My personal opinion is that this... My personal opinion is that this is, this probably is a spot zone, allowing this situation to happen in the least intrusive way possible. And I think that when I look at that neighborhood, I look at that neighborhood as it's not going to be a major corridor where people are going to want to put up a 50-foot building. I, or a lot of, let's say, commercial that's going to create a lot of traffic. So, I would be in favor of this rezone, simply because I don't think that it's going to go any further than this.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the public here. Do we have any more comments? Anyone want to step forward? Yes, please step forward.
Hello, I'm Bob BA. I'm the Board Chairman for Adult Daycare Services, the seller here. It sounds to me, again, like Steve just said, that this board is pretty much in favor of the use. There's no objection to that. I think it would be a great use, and it'd be a great neighbor, because we're going to be, still be operating just north of there. And it sounds like, from what I heard from our planning staff, is that the general plan calls for this to transition into commercial, which includes regional business, if I heard them right. So, I think it's consistent with the city's general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask staff a question. The neighborhood commercial zoning district is also consistent with the general plan, right? Thank you.
Time for a motion?
Do you have something?
I have nothing, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Any further discussion before we have a motion here? Okay, we're ready for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of PLN 19-022, a rezone from multifamily medium density to business regional.
Got a second? You second it? Okay, any further discussion?
I have a discussion on this.
Don?
I would, I'm in favor of the project. But I have a concern that if we don't put "per the site plan," you are opening the tent to the camel's nose. So, if we add that on to it, if, you know, that'd be acceptable.
It is, but I thought they said that you'd have to do a site plan modification anyway. Didn't you say that?
We want, we want to specify in the motion that it's per the site plan.
Okay, yeah.
I would like to see that in the motion. For me, be able to support this motion.
Okay, do you support...
I amend my motion to include that.
We're just discussing.
To clarify the reason I would propose the neighborhood commercial. One, it's clearly consistent with the neighborhood and more consistent, and it's still consistent with the general plan. My concern was, having worked for developers, and when I looked at this area out there the other day, this, I would lick my chops because it's underdeveloped in, you know, a lot of properties there. And the first thing I would do, I would look to putting together several lots. I would acquire several properties here. If one of them is already zoned regional commercial, that would surely help my cause. I'm not sure the residents understand all the uses that could be put within this zoning that they might not be too happy about. That's the reason I said that.
I call for the question.
No more comments?
One second. So, there was an amendment to the motion to add, consistent with the site plan. There was not a second to that amended motion?
Who did the, you did the second?
I'll do the second, second.
Matt, are we, are we on, on course here? Are we doing okay?
Yes. You're on course. You're doing okay.
Okay, let's call for the motion. All in favor?
I want to discuss the second motion.
You want to discuss the second motion? How long are you going to take?
Long as it takes until I see the heads nod.
Okay, Ken.
My, you know, it's tough, because we hear these arguments all the time. It's a good, good cause, and I have no objection to this, this use in this building. My concern is, when they change tenants, even with the site plan, all that stuff goes away. I'd rather see this building not, not have the right to be 50 feet until we've done something with that neighborhood. I just think at this point, you're granting a lot of zoning privilege in business regional that's not allowed in other zoning for purposes. So, I like the use. I think we got aggressive in the particular category of zoning we went to. And I asked our city attorney about spot zoning, and he concurred that it's okay. So, we're there. But that's my only concern. I just, I would rather see this, see this thing have come through as a CUP or maybe even a, whatever the minimum zoning is, because you're granting a lot of privilege here. You change parking, you change height, you change a lot of stuff. And the minute they're not the tenant in the building, that site plan amendment seems like it vaporizes. Is that what I heard earlier?
No, if so, if a different tenant comes in and they want to change the site plan at all, like, they need more parking, which there is no room for no more parking. If they want to change the site plan or add to the building, then it would have to come back through the public hearing process to amend the site plan.
And, and barking dogs is one thing, but when you have a body shop, which could go into a business general zoning, I think the noise just invades the neighborhood. I hate to be taking this position on this particular issue. But it's not for this use that I'm concerned with. It's for the other use. There's a lot of other uses that can go into business regional that none of the neighbors might have anticipated there. So, you know my position.
I have a question for Matt. Does the building, the way it sits, does that have anything to do with our rezoning?
To, to the extent you tie it to the site plan, it does, right? Because when you tie it to the site plan, whether it transfers in the future, the new owners are going to be subject to the existing footprint of the building and the existing height of the building and the general layout of the parking. So, I don't know if that answers your question or if you were going down a different kind of route.
It seems like we're spending a lot of time on the building and what it may be or what it can be or what it may be in the future.
Gotcha.
I don't see it as particular to the rezoning case. I think we're rezoning the land, aren't we?
Yeah, I think, I think Commissioner Rup kinda nailed it on the head when he said there's two kinds of issues, right? There's the use issue, and there's the zoning issue. So, they, they can be distinct. So, in the future, if you do tie it to the site plan, whoever the future owner is, is going to be tied to that building. So, whether or not that really lends itself to a garage or, or something like that, may be different. But once you rezone it, then all the uses allowed in that zoning certainly can come into play based on that existing building, if you tie it to the site plan.
Wouldn't that be true whether or not the building was there or not?
What do you, what do you mean by that?
If we were just looking at it without a building, would it, would it still remain the same as for our rezoning issue?
For, the zoning will be what the zoning is in the future. So, if it's rezone, that zoning obviously carries on. I think the distinction here is, there's a general interest in tying it to the site plan to limit the use to what the proposed use is now. So, that future building will, will remain in its footprint and in its height and in its parking into the future, unless somebody comes back before this board and asks for a change. So, and George?
Yeah, George may. Picking up with this better. One additional point. Typically, when we see a situation where it's, I don't know if I'm coming across or not, rezoning of a blank piece of property where there's no building on it, almost always, you see a site plan and you tie your recommendation to a site plan. And the city council sees a site plan and ties their determination on the zoning to a site plan. So, tying the existing site plan to this rezoning actually follows the same pattern we would typically do with a blank piece of property that's proposing to rezone. We want to know generally what they're going to do with the property. The city council wants to know. The neighbors want to know. And it's almost always tied to a site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's call for the question. All in favor of the modified proposal? Raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes six to one. Is that correct? You guys voted for it? Okay, six to one. And Mel, what is your primary opposition based on, you know, so we can pass that on to council?
Well, it's, as I, I don't want to repeat everything I said, but it's, it's spot zoning, which in my experience is not a good idea, even though it may be legal. It's not the best thing for the neighborhood. To overzone something, it opens up, to use councilman's term, the nose in the tent theory. And this is a good neighborhood to, it's underdeveloped now. It's just a question of what's it going to be? I don't zone for what might happen, but if it allows, which it does, allow with a conditional use permit, this use, which we all like, I don't know, I still don't see the justification for going to a higher-than-neighborhood category. I would use the neighborhood category and get a use permit.
Ken, you must have something.
I do. I, I only voted, I mean, you know what I felt about this one. I really concur with Mel on so much of it. I think it's an overzone. But I, I voted with it because I believe what George and Matt are telling us that the intention that we're trying to limit this to will stay there in the future. It has nothing to do with the veracity of the seller or the buyer. It's what's, that some guy five owners down may come here and ask for. And if we have that assurance, that's why I voted for it.
Any other comments? Okay. All the motion passes. Now, we have staff updates. Bren, do you have any staff updates on...
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Yeah? Any annexations coming along or...
What's an annexation?
Perhaps, oh, is that a perhaps, maybe?
What's that, what's an annexation?
Yeah. We haven't done one of those for a while, yeah. All right. Meeting is adjourned.
No more bike riding, Delia.